Order. Please take a moment for silent reflection or prayer. Any hearing?
Nicole Cohen here. Artiana Eliar.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Lisa Roman. Kathy Cox.
Here. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a call to the public? All right. Do we have Mrs. Malkowski here? All right. We will move on. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda noting our carbon emissions is 1.03 metric tons.
Did everyone understand that?
No.
Okay. I didn't. I didn't. Why, here's the end of it.
Oh, that our carbon, I'm sorry, our total carbon emissions is 1.03 metric tons.
Okay.
For student travel. Sorry, I should have said student travel within the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Hearing.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. And with all business, 5.1, Mrs. Asire.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the second presentation of the revised policy JPA student discipline. We did bring this back without any revisions, and it is modified to include that student discipline will not be included on student transcripts.
I move we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Then Terry.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
And Kathy Cox.
Yes. 5.2, Ms. Oh, okay. Mr. DeGol, you want to do that? You want to wait for the other?
Yes, I can do it. Madam President and Governing Board, we request that you approve the second presentation of revised policy JCPA professional staff restructure. There have been no revisions since the first reading on May 7.
Do I have a motion?
I move we approve 5.2 as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Well, before we have discussion, we'll vote on your motions. Will, are we voting to discuss it?
No.
Are we?
No, we put the motion on the floor, then we have the ability to discuss it once it's on the floor, and if there is no discussion, it's taken as.
There is, I take it there is no discussion then. Okay then, Terry.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. 5.3, Mrs. Bestin Angel, you want to take that one too?
Fair, thank you. Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the second presentation of revised policies JCPA, Greek, B, D, C, D, R religiously, JCPA, with the Vatican, the P, C, D, R, and G, C, E vacations and holidays. There have been no changes to the policy since the same sub- first reading.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I move that we approve 5.3 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's no discussion, Mrs. Fleming.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. All right. New business, item 6.1, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve an increase of 10 cents to school lunch prices for the fiscal year 2019 through 2020. There will be, there will be no increase to the school breakfast price. Governing Board is asked to approve an increase to school lunch prices to become effective in the 1920s school year. USD requires that there is equity in school lunch pricing, a provision that requires school districts to charge students for paid meals at a price that is on average equal to the distance, the difference between free meal reimbursement of $3.39 and the paid meal reimbursement of $0.39, which is a difference of $3. Schools that currently charge less for meal prices than the amount needed to create paid lunch equity are required to gradually increase prices over time until they meet the requirement or supplement their food service operating funds with non-federal funds to ensure equity. So the prices are below there for you to see, 1819, that's this current fiscal year's prices, and then 1920s proposed. You can see the difference in 10 cents in the elementary lunch price and in the middle of high school lunch price. You can also see that we are at $2.50 for elementary and $2.75, still under the $3 target, so that's why we are gradually increasing meal prices at 10 cents to try to catch up to that, that amount over time.
Any discussion?
I move we approve 6.1 as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
I didn't want Arshay to go down.
So, we have no choice in this. We must increase our school lunch prices over the USD gradually over time, and that's why we, we chose 10 cents, just as a gradual movement at that scale towards that, that average price. Now, that can increase next year, so that $3 mark may continue to, to climb, and if we still fall short of that, we need to gradually increase prices to try to get to that point at some future, future date.
Call for a question.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. Item 6.2, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the appointment of Mrs. Marsha Cox and Mr. Hal Christiansen to the Employee Benefit Trust of Trustees effective July 1, 2019. Arizona Revised Statute 15-382(c) specifies trustees are appointed by the Governing Board, and if an employee of the school district is acting as a trustee, the trust shall be administered by at least five joint trustees, of whom no more than one may be an employee of the school district. Both Mrs. Cox and Mr. Christiansen have previously served on the EBT Trust Board and were the only two applicants to apply for the two open positions. Employee Benefit Trust Board of Trustee terms are three years, therefore, the trust membership would, if approved, be as follows, and you can see the five members of the Board listed there with their expiration dates.
Any discussion?
I move we approve 6.2 as presented.
Second. I, I would just like to add to that. It's really nice to have people with Mrs. Cox's experience and a knowledge of the history of the changes we've made in the EBT, especially since she's been so instrumental in making them, so it's, it's nice to know that we will have you to continue to serve on the board. All right.
I, I agree with that, but I also wanted to say I appreciate whoever sent out the applications, because I think that was important, especially for the board members that will be here longer, to see, you know, what some of the qualifications are as they're looking forward, you know? So I hope that will be a normal thing every time we have a new person apply to be a trustee, that the board will see that whole application, so they can make that determination. And yes, thank you to Marsha and Hal both, and everybody, Amy sitting out there, everybody who's sitting on that trust is doing a good job. Very transparent, we love that.
Mrs. Fleming.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. Item 6.3, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve Revolution, Resolutions Number 19, 2019, 2001 through 2019, 2010. The action described in the, in the recommendation is necessary to continue our current practices through the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. The resolutions as submitted are maintenance resolutions and will not affect any substantial change in our current operating procedures.
Is there a motion?
I move that we, that we accept 6.3 as presented.
A second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Mrs. Fleming.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. 6.4, Mrs. Asire.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached two-year memorandum of understanding between Hospice of Hattasoo and Lake Hattasoo Unified School District from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Approval of this memorandum of, of understanding will enable the Lake Hattasoo Unified School District to provide rest of the approved support when necessary. Hospice of Hattasoo will provide these services at no cost to LHUSD, and this memo has been previously approved by.
I move that we approve 6.4 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
Well, we just, I just got the curriculum, like a detailed look at the curriculum, so I'm going to look at it for, for next year, submit my suggestions well in advance.
Okay.
But thank you for requesting that coming up, I appreciate it.
All right, Mrs. Fleming.
Nicole Cohen.
No.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. 6.5, Mr. Becker, or Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between Lake Hattasoo Unified School District and Wahabi Community College for dual enrollment courses. Dual enrollment provides high school juniors and seniors with not only high school credit, which count toward high school graduation, but with college credits while they are enrolled in high school. High school students will be able to take MCC courses using MCC curricula and textbooks. Classes will be taught at the high school during the school day by qualified high school instructors who are employed at Lake Hattasoo High School. Dual enrollment provides free college tuition for high school students who are able to take these classes and makes it possible for graduating high school senior to have completed at least one year's worth of college credit by the end of his or her high school career, thus saving the student both time and money. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by the district's legal counsel as per form. I did add a note on here after talking to legal counsel that it is contingent on the county attorney's approval of the IGA without revision. You'll recall last year, or actually earlier this year, this school year, we came to you like in August or September, if I remember right, with the school year already started with this, asking for action to approve the IGA. This time, we're on the front end of this, so we're bringing it to the board before they do, so we just want to add in there the contingency that they don't make any changes to this. If they, if they approve it as per form.
They'll come back.
Then you're okay, but if they change it, I'll have to come back and, and point that out to you.
Any other discussion or questions?
I move that we approve 6.5 as presented.
I second.
All right.
And then are we able to, to see, I, I know that we talked about this last year, but can we see the textbooks? Can we have access to the textbooks that are being taught in class, the board?
Yeah, certainly.
Just to review, just to see what they're doing?
They, they're actually the textbooks that MCC uses for those, for those classes?
Right, I just want to see what they are, because when we approve it, we're approving the textbooks that they use, so I'd like to see the textbooks. I'm not going to.
No, I know what you mean, I'm just, I wanted, you know. I would like to say something about dual enrollment. I, I wish more people knew about it, more students could take advantage of it, it's really a wonderful opportunity to see students graduate from high school, and often, they go over to MCC and they get their two-year certificate before they actually get their high school certificate, diploma at, at high school graduation, which is, you know, kind of what you want, and then, so now they've already got two years of college out of the way, and then you run into them with their parents in a couple of years, and they just graduated from college, and they now enter a master's program. I mean, it's just, it's just, how can you lose with, with that? It's just a wonderful, so glad we're able to offer that here. Mrs. Fleming, can I, I'm sorry, can I ask? Go ahead.
I, the only question I had is, it says qualified high school instructor, and I'd like to know what qualified high school instructor dual enrollment entails in this day and age.
So, that has changed over the course, and we are on year two of five years where our teachers have the ability to make corrections to their certificates to teach at the high school, they're certified through ADE, and, and they meet the criteria to be a, a high school teacher in the public school system, and to teach at the collegiate level, there's a different accreditation that takes place for those teachers. The rules kind of changed a few years ago, and so we had to revisit things, and to be a qualified teacher at the end of the five years, you have to have a master's in your program that you are teaching, so if you're teaching math, you have to have a master's in math, not just a master's in, in place, it has to be in that subject area for those qualified people. We have one person on the high school campus that does have a master's, they have their MBA, and we, we teach a business class, or she does, teaches a business class, and the others are on that probation, probationary time. With that being said, though, a few of them teach at MCC night classes as well, so it's not the high school just selecting teachers and putting them in place, they're, they're being highly noted at the, at MCC as well to teach classes for them. As we've had teachers retire, we used to have dual enrollment Spanish, and as we had teachers retire within that five-year time period, we're not selecting new teachers to fall into that position, and they're not approving them, so we've lost dual enrollment Spanish and dual enrollment biology over the past few years, which we have replaced dual enrollment biology with AP biology moving forward, planning for the future that this possibly could come to an end at Lake Hattasoo High School.
We also live, I mentioned, we've met with the leadership at MCC, and we are struggling just as much as we are in terms of having those qualifications, and so that has been one of the concerns, is that we are losing dual enrollment classes because we don't have teachers who are qualified to teach them, and so according to the colleges' requirements, it's something that we're aware of.
Is, is that ACC's requirement, or is that a state requirement?
That's the community college district system.
I believe, I, I, I don't want to, I'll speak on record, obviously, but I believe it's national, it's not just the state of Arizona, so this is a problem that's going to sweep from the East Coast all the way to the West Coast, that for schools that do offer this on our campuses, and my sister-in-law is a teacher, and our kid is going into high school next year, and they are going to a specific high school because it offers this, and I said be very careful, because here's what's going on, and, and they were made well aware of that going into high school as well, so it's not just the Lake Hattasoo MCC.
Actually, I call it in California as well. You're right, I'm good. Just a question on the textbook list, so we actually have included the textbooks that are used in these courses on our textbook list that we brought to the board in the House, so it's, unless the books change, which sometimes occurs, most of those are on the textbook list. Are you requesting that a copy of each of them be provided here at the workroom for work review, or to?
Yeah, I would like to look at the actual books. I know that we were presented that list, but that requires me to go purchase the book in order.
Right, or, I guess my question was versus going to the high school to look at, if that ever happened here.
It would be nice to, if there was, if we could have a set here just to look, it doesn't have to stay here, but yeah. It's hard to get to the high school.
Yes, it's, it's hard to get around anywhere at the high school right now, so I can't promise that this is going to be done by the end of June. Friday is my last day, so that I can take a little vacation, and then a lot of construction and whatnot is taking place at high school as well, so I cannot even get into some of those buildings that house those books at this time. I will try to get what I can.
It's not urgent, it, it can be after your bathroom vacation. It's, it's not for this year, but I would like to see, have an idea, look at the texts, I've looked at a lot of the texts from here, so. But my question, I, a question that developed was, when I remember looking at the list, I don't know if that was in something that Terry sent, the dual enrollment attached to this, was there an attachment with this action item that you mailed to us?
It's, it's in the IGA, so.
Okay, yeah. It seemed to me that there was some courses on there that weren't like what I would think of as a normal college course, more like career courses, is that, am I remembering that correctly?
I have the list, can you read those off? Design 1, Intro to Business Entertainment, I think that's, Business Interference?
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking, that doesn't.
Sanitation and Safety, English Position 1, History of US 1, College Map, Caligula, Effective Leadership, Intro to Culinary.
Yeah.
English Comp 2, Anatomy and Vägeology, History of US 2, Plane Tugentometry and Intro to Physics. Yes, there are.
So there are a lot, you know, more than a couple that aren't just regular, you know, English, history, AP, biology.
And not all of those are, are being taught at high school right now. They've been in the past, and they stay on that IGA, so they're a choice, just like our student course handbook, once a course is approved, it stays there as an option for our students in the future.
Anything else?
So for myself, I was just thinking there's not going to be textbooks for all those courses.
That's true.
I understand that.
All right. Thank you. Terry.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
Artiana Eliar.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. Item 6.6, Mrs. Bestin Angel. Are you still there?
I'm still here, and just so you know, there's a presentation to go with this, so but I'll, I'll read the action item first. Madam President, Governing Board, it is recommended that the Board approve changes to the LHUSD teacher evaluation and growth system. As a result of legislative changes and guidelines, as well as feedback received from administration and certified staff, changes have been made to the formal evaluation tool. Tool is developed in alignment with the IRS 15 by 37. This system was created with a philosophy that ongoing data should be gathered, teacher expectations should be clear and equitable from school to school, quality feedback systems of support are essential to improve teacher practice, teacher reflection is a key component to improving performance over their careers, and the teacher's role is to work with students and support their learning. The updated tool features a walkthrough instrument that will give evaluators data to support specific indicators on the evaluation tool. The evaluation tool also streamlines forms for teachers, and evaluators can clearly lay out timelines and requirements of expectations. The tool sets the overall evaluation from seven standards by proposition. This tool is aligned to LHUSD professional development and best practices. Those both principles and teachers are urged to focus their attention on effective teaching and learning. The system presented today includes suggested additions, adjustments, and refinements from committee members and administration. Copy of the teacher evaluation was sent electronically, there have been a couple of revisions, steps should be on your desk, that were made, that are clear.
Is there a motion to approve 6.6?
Do you want to see the PowerPoint first, or presentation first?
Sure.
Okay. Abby, I think I'm counting on you to click for me, so just stop me at any time if there's questions, and Abby, if you'll go the second slide as the committee member.
If so.
So, this evaluation system was created over the past six months. We, as a committee and with administration, decided that we did not want to move toward an evaluation system that was just off the shelf, like many school districts do, we developed a meeting that was more that was specific to our schools and our needs. And so I just want to commend the work of the evaluation committee, because this was more work than any of us knew we were getting into, and it really, they worked extremely hard. The committee really represents different perspectives from across schools, grade, subjects, who are the students that they teach, and so we really wanted to make sure that this is an evaluation system that all teachers and all students that have been from. And Abby, if you'll click. And so when we're looking at an evaluation system, we really wanted to keep two things in mind, knowing that most teachers are effective in their practices, how do we continue to grow and improve their practice, and so all throughout their career, there's something that they're working on, they're getting better, and we're really not having this level of stagnant state. And then at the same time, when we want to grow teachers, we also need to be able to identify underperforming teachers, and either fix what their issues are, or we need to support them into not teaching our students. And so our evaluation has been two different, very different things, is, you know, improve teaching, and then really identify what quality teaching looks like, and we were really mindful, yeah, we're really looking at IER 3, which is when they look for probationary continuing status, we really wanted to make sure that they have all those skills, so that we know that once we have teachers that are at continuing status, we know that we have those quality teachers in the classroom. And if you'll click again, and so really thinking about some of the issues with our last evaluation tool, and it was very lengthy, there was all sorts of pieces that were not aligned, that were speaking to the evaluations conduct, and we're just not, there's just not effective practices, and then we really wanted to make sure that our walkthrough instruments, staff principals are using, when they walk into a classroom, it's easy to see evaluations, before this new system really works separate, we had different schools using different lesson plans, and so we really wanted to streamline that everything we were doing was easy to access, easy for the principal, easy for the teacher, and there was just a streamlined workflow for the evaluators. And if you'll click again, and so there should be a graph chart in front of you, and this was really thinking about what, how can our evaluation system improve teaching? And so really, so the first feature that we hire them, they've got the attitudes that we want are committed to our kids, but then slowly over time, in those first couple of years, we're supporting them by teaching them the strategies that we want them to use, we're showing them good models, that they're at some point, they're learning these models, and then they're applying those models, and they're thinking about those things that we teach, and so we really developed this in our lesson plan, of what, of what good teaching looks like, and then as teachers grow, they're able to innovate and advance the profession, so those highly effective teachers, they in turn become the mentors and the teachers for the next shift of teaching. And then Abby, if you'll click, the next slide shows what the evaluation looks like, and, and there's three parts to each of us, is the indicator, and so we have the proposition, which is just the language that we use for the categories, and so maybe what are these big categories of what we're expecting teachers to be able to do, and then we get into the specifics with the indicators, so the indicators describe specific skills that teachers will be able to accomplish, and there's multiple indicators that make, uh, keep the proposition. And then we have the look for, the look for are just a guide, they're not a checklist, they're just something that will teachers and evaluators can look for, that, so these are the things that I'm looking for that tell me that the teacher is able to do this set of skills or complete new tasks. And then if you'll click to the next page, which is the classroom observation instrument, prior to this, we used the teacher success model, and there are many distinctions about it, but it just wasn't quite aligned to our evaluation system. It was really just one piece of it, but this really takes all of the pieces of the teaching and the learning in the classroom, so this really is able to add in watching the skills that we're, we're needing for you to do for effective instruction, more than. More than seeing, am I, am I seeing this? And so this is going to be able to give principals and evaluators stronger data when they're really thinking about what does teaching look like in that classroom. And if you'll click again. We created a lesson plan template. This was, we actually had a lesson plan template this year. And we just simplified it a little bit moving forward. But this way, when teachers turn in the lesson plans for the evaluation, it will be the same, no matter what school you're at. It's based on my homework work and it's taken Barry Madeline Hunter base, which is really a direct style construction that we know that works. The other thing that we see is there's check for understanding, standing. There's assessment all the way through. So teachers are gathering data about whether students are getting it and whether we can move on. So we're really excited about this new evaluation, sorry, new lesson plan.
Anything, anything else you're going to add? Go ahead.
The self-reflection, because the next page is reflectionable, so we are having teachers be self-reflexive on their skills and think about what skills they need to add. And so we know that this is really the key to teacher growth throughout their career. So even if you're someone that's teaching for twenty years, thinking about what in my practice do can I still work on? And for sure, the teacher, that keeps us learning. And the same thing for the professional goal. It's tied to the evaluation and the skills in it, and so teachers get focused. And then if you'll click the next page, this is just a guide for the evaluators, letting them know how many times based on point four, you're going to go into a classroom. And this really is the same that we had in our old evaluation tool, but we just laid it out, so it's really easy for evaluators to know that information. The evaluation rating, eighty percent of the tool evaluation is based on classroom performance. And then this is by statute, the other twenty percent is based on student growth measures. The ten percent is growth from pre to post test and ten percent is the school letter grade. Now, what that twenty percent is, we decided as a school district, that's what we propose based on student growth measures. So thinking about what a teacher does inside, in their classroom, and then collectively as a school. And then the last slide. Our next step, doctor approval, is criticizing the evaluation tool in frontline, providing training for administrators, training for teachers. Next year, we'll develop a highly effective teacher instrument, which has been statute, but we needed to roll this out first and then continue to refine our practices and tools.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I make a motion that we approve six point six.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion?
I just want to be clear on, because the pages that are here, that you said that there were some changes made. I don't know what those are because.
Did you, did you get that, Jamie?
My mic's not on. I'm not really clear on the changes. Terry put, I believe Terry put these on our desk. For Proposition One and Proposition Five. But, but it doesn't indicate what was changed, and so, and then I have a couple of questions. So there's that. I don't know if you want me to ask them all, because maybe you might answer them all in one. The second question is, going from this, where you have the propositions one through five, but then to the observation instrument? How did you determine, was that just your committee that determined which one to use for the observation piece?
So the propositions one and five are things that you can't necessarily see walking into a classroom. So it's how, you know, your professionalism, how you speak with parents. And so that isn't something that, because I go into a classroom and I watch the teacher teach, it's not as visible. And so the walkthrough instrument is really what is visible. So also, the ones that we have on planning instruction, if I'm an evaluator, although I can assume what's planned and not planned, I really can't see that without seeing a teacher's lesson plan book and knowing what that looks like. And so the observation tool, the ones that were selected are probably the visible things that you can see within a classroom.
Okay. That makes sense.
And then do you want me to share what was changed?
If you could, yes, please.
Yes. And so if you look at Proposition one point one, in the highly effective category, what, what the last bullet used to say, teachers empower students to advocate for themselves when their needs are not being met. And it was changed to creating a, teachers create the classroom environment where students are comfortable advocating for themselves when their learning needs are not being met. So really focusing on, you know, we're giving students that room to say, I can't see the board. Can you repeat that again? And so just really making sure that we're tying it down to their, their learning needs. And then.
I'm sorry, there was a typo in that.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I will fix it. I apologize. I did that in your meeting today very quickly. And then for one point three, we removed out the title equity, which was creating an optimal learning environment of respect for more. And just making sure that we knew as a committee what we were talking about with equity. But not everybody shares that and not everybody knows that. And so really, when we're focused on making sure that all students are valued and all students are included. And so that piece of the title wasn't necessarily, wasn't needed and it didn't add anything. Our focus really is on just making sure that the teacher is mindful of all of their students.
Okay.
And then for something five, in five point three, showing professionalism. Again, that's highly effective. It is saying, teacher makes a concerted effort to challenge negative attitude or practices of what it used to say. That was pretty negative. And instead focusing on teachers is being positive in aligning themselves with a discernment and vision. And so rather than having teachers challenge other teachers for what they believe are negative practices, being involved with yourself and aligning, you know, your practices with this recognition and vision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any hope, thank you.
Um, well, two more points or questions. So is there a specific, under two point four, leveraging knowledge of content and pedagogy? Pedagogy, however you say that word. Utilizes research-based strategies. So I've been researching research and trying to figure out what evidence is versus research-based versus scientific. So, and you're not probably going to be able to answer this question right now, and that's fine. But I would like to be clear on what all those terms mean and how we're using them within our school district. Because when I'm out trying to research, it's very difficult. Like I have this one document that I use that talks about scientifically-based research versus evidence-based practices and instruction. And, and it goes on from there. It's pretty engrossed, but it uses different language than research-based strategies. So I just want to be clear on the terminology, so maybe I could get help offline for that.
Yeah, and that is just a little more and something, you know, we spent the year, we went to John Taddy. And as part of this, is really thinking about, there are, there are things that I know and I love because it's my favorite lesson that I've done in my path forever and ever. Because I really like making posters of whatever, but it's not actually a factor. And so, but I understand your point. We, we've been, as teachers, really pushed through research-based. But I think that's a good point. And certainly, we do want teachers to use things that we know support students and they're not, it's not just their favorite thing in their basket of tricks.
Or new theory. Right. Okay, thank you so much. This is a lot of work, and so I'm appreciative to everybody that did all that work, because I know that was a lot. I read the last one, word for word, the last evaluation, and it was, it was a mess. This is really good.
And I, I think if Mrs. Bestedangle isn't going to share, right, she spent a whole lot of time organizing. And then everybody who was on the committee spent hours and hours and hours. They worked on their own. They worked on weekends, refining and refinings of this tool. It truly was, when she says it's a six-month effort, it was a six-month effort, but a lot of time spent on it, not just once a month meetings.
Sure, it shows. Yeah, it does.
Anybody else? I, I myself am thrilled to see the guided practice put back in to lesson design and checking for understanding. I mean, objective and scaffolding, I think that was always there, but I, we got away from that lesson design. And I, which I happen to be a big believer in, and that is Madeline Hunter, but, which is research-based. But I thank you for doing that, because I think a teacher, when she realizes that the end of the day, grading homework, whatever, that her students didn't do well, all you have to do is go back and say, what did I leave out of, of the lesson design? And you know what you did. I mean, you just didn't do that, or you didn't do a good job, or you didn't have your objective. And your independent practices weren't connected in a very good way. And it's, it's a real easy way to find out what your kids didn't do well, so I'm very appreciative of that. And again, I want to echo the rest of the board and Mrs. Sire about how much work obviously went into this. Raise your hand. I, I see three of you out there. Raise your hand if you were on this committee.
The whole room.
Okay, all of you.
You're all here going, pass, pass.
Yeah, we don't want to do it again.
Well, hopefully this is it, and then you hit the mark here.
We did just take a cookie cup.
Out of curiosity, I wonder if Mike has any idea how much money we received for the unfunded man tape that requires this?
To eight?
Well then, Mrs. Fleming?
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Again, thank you, Mrs. Bestedangle and the committee for all of your hard work.
Thank you all.
Item six point seven, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve a contract for accounting services between Kelly Morrison and the Lake Havas Unified School District to be effective July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. The district received two responses, two quotes for accounting services that are listed there in your action item. Twenty-five dollars an hour plus travel expenses for Kelly. Professional group at a hundred dollars an hour plus travel expenses, and then three additional requests for quotes. We did not receive a response, but we did receive one just the other day after this was submitted. That was at two hundred dollars an hour. So Kelly Morrison is a former accounting specialist of the Lake Havas Unified School District. She just had to relocate to another state earlier this year. She continues to play an important role in our financial software migration. The rate of pay listed in the contract is twenty-five dollars per hour, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars annually. And that does include any expenses associated with travel. That rate of pay is, calculator was determined, that not to exceed was determined to be twenty-five dollars an hour times eight hours a day, times two hundred and sixty-one days a year. That's just assuming she never takes a day off for education. So it's a not to exceed sixty thousand, so we don't have to come back before the board later in the year.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve six point seven as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Murray, is Kelly the gal that straightened up a lot of our issues with reconciliation?
She is, we have roughly three individuals over less than a two-year period in that position. And then Kelly was hired, and she's been with us for a couple of years now. And so definitely the turnover prior to her being here did not help the district at all as far as reconciling with the county. And we've made tremendous, tremendous gains with her stability and expertise. So yes, to answer your question, she is definitely instrumental in doing that.
And how does she interface with the district?
Our system is web-based, so our software system that we upgraded this last year, she's able to utilize that wherever she is. So where she is now currently in another state, she's able to get on a computer, just like we are here, and access the same portal and logins that we utilize here. She's, whether she's sitting in a, in a room here in this building or where she is in another state, it's the same. We just don't get to see her face as often.
And the twenty-five dollars an hour, that is all-inclusive, so she's paying for her own benefits, her own tax.
Correct. And that's, and that's, I'm, I'm assuming, because she's the one that presented that quote, I'm assuming that she's taking all of that into account on her, on her end. So if you look at, if we were to hire someone in that position, which historically has been really difficult to do, that same pay structure would be pretty equivalent to if we were to hire someone and have them housed here in a full-time capacity.
Anything else?
I think it's a real honor to have a former employee of the district be offered, you know, this kind of job. I think it speaks to the work that she did in the department, because I haven't heard of anybody being able to do this in our district since I've been sitting on the board. So I think it speaks to her level of work. She's a nice lady. She was very helpful to, for that transition, I remember. So I think it's great.
Mrs. Fleming?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Item six point seven. I'm sorry, item six point eight, Mrs. Wiltshire.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve memorandum of understanding between Havas Community Health Foundation and the Cap C and High School District for the Student Assistance Program, known as S A, for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. The memorandum establishes a formal covenant between the parties to support collaborative work in better addressing the media role and social needs of our adverse students through the Student Assistance Program in all our elementary schools with the intent of providing services in the middle and high schools of opportunity and time permit. Havas Community Health Foundation agrees to administer and provide the Student Assistance Program to support the elementary schools. The district agrees to provide twenty thousand dollars in funding to supplement the wage of the Student Assistance Program coordinator. This program was previously supported through our agency. Funding will come from the two ninety-one Medicaid funds. This has been reviewed for purchasing and by legal. Agreement is attached for review and will be presented annually for renewal. Just so you know, the S A program is an evidence-based program.
I move we approve six forty as presented.
Second. Discussion?
I do have questions. Uh, Mrs. Sire answered those for me. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Fleming?
Wait, we are, we did make, we are updating it before we sign it.
Yes, I think we have, the signed copy has replaced the ordinary.
Okay, okay.
Aye.
John Maston?
Yes.
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Item six point nine, Mrs. Sire.
Thank you. These are items that were requested to be brought back for board discussion. And so the first three policies that we're bringing forward is the policy R dash R student.
is the policy JRR-RR student records regarding directory information. So it is a recommendation that the governing board discuss and read upon approved revisions to the regulation on student records for directory information. I do want to share that the policy JRR lists the maximum information that may be released as directory information pursuant to the law, and those are listed on pages three and four of the policy. Each district governing board must approve that list of information that the district will release as directory information. And so you do have flexibility to reduce the list, but not to enlarge the list.
So let's stop. Where is the directory house? How did I come across it?
So this is referred to as directory information, but it is the information that is released from our student system synergy upon request. And I appreciate Mr. Becker is a research for us as well. But the main organizations who request directory information are the Board of Regents, for colleges, and the military. So those are the two main requesters. And then if we publish things like the honor roll list, or we publish students' pictures or things like that, those are also considered directory information.
I move to the open discussion on item 6.9.
Yes. Second.
There's a lot on here. We don't depend on what we're allowed to release. I like things like the student's telephone listing, or date of place of birth, electronic mail address, major field of study, dates of attendance, enrollment status, whether it's full-time or part-time, students' practices, and then the student's most recently attended educational agency or institution. Are those things that we really need to be able to give the military or college on a student?
I can address this.
So will we opt out the list?
No, actually, I don't.
Okay.
Didn't realize I hadn't hit. My colleague.
I have the special list, Scott.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I didn't get the special list.
Would you like me to start with the military and what we release to them?
Yes.
Okay. So what we release to the military is the student's name, the student's grade that they're enrolled in, the gender, their date of birth, their parents' address, their parents' phone number, and their parent email. And that's what the military gets from us. It's a separate query that we run in our student management system and provide that to the military upon request. So some of the things that are listed in policy, because they're on that list, just as stated, we do not release all of that to the military. The Board of Regents, that list is, we release the student's name, the student's address, the student's email, which is our HAVASU online account, it's not their personal email account, that all of our students have at the high school. That is also a safety measure that's at the high school, put in place for both the high school and the students. There are a list of words that are triggered on their email when they submit from that, guns, suicide, things, school shootings, things of that nature. When those happen in that email setting, when they're submitting assignments to teachers, it goes through that, and it will send the principal of that site an email immediately, where that triggers a conversation for me to be had with the student. Or I can go through and say, "This is part of the assignment or the essay" that they're going through. That's a side note to that, but that's one of our safeguards that we have with the HAVASU online account. Going on with the list, the student's date of birth, the parent email, the parents' phone number, and then the parents' address, both physical and the mailing address, is submitted to the Board of Regents.
So after looking at that list, thank you for giving us that. My question is, why does the military require less information than the Board of Regents?
That I don't know.
Is the NSA involved?
They can find the W.
So this is what we're required to send to the Board of Regents?
Yes. And that has been pared back, because I believe this was a topic of conversation a year or two ago, where this was brought forward, and this list was pared down at that time. And what they were requesting, they did not get because we pared down this list as well. And I do not recall what those things were.
I don't either, but it sounds maybe familiar. Well, I just find that interesting, that the military requires less than a state university would, or the system, university system would. So what happens if we cut down our list again and say, "We're not giving more than we're giving the military"? Do our kids not get into college?
You know, I know, I think really the only, and I just kind of missed off, but I think the main difference is the student's email address, which is, actually, we don't provide the student's email address. We provide district email address for that student. So technically, it's a student's email list.
I guess that's...
And then the parents' phone number is the item that's on that list.
What about athletic scholarships, inquiries for athletes?
For that, our athletes have to go on the NCAA clearinghouse.
Yeah.
So we don't provide that?
Yeah.
You'd have to pay the fee to NCAA and NAIA if you're so inclined.
Well, this might be a good time for Mr. Maston to announce that his son has a scholarship, and I think that's really big news.
He did very well in the scholarship and grant pool. So he's going to go to Blackburn College in Illinois. And he has got his college pretty much paid for for four years at a private school. So he may play a little baseball out there as well.
Well, congratulations. So anything else to add, Mr. Becker?
No, I mean, obviously, here to answer questions on any of them as well.
Any more questions?
So I just want to understand the process. So since we only do it for Board of Regents and military, everybody else's, all the other requests are individual, or our students are saying, you know, directed, if you want to participate, you need to go out and do it yourself. So...
Well, this, that we provide the media, things like that, which would be included in some of these other areas.
Sure, sure. Local media, right? So the email is the only thing. And for the military, they only ask for the parents' address. Board of Regents wants the student's address and the parents' address. I don't know what they're assuming there, but... So if we just took out the student's email, what would that do? Because I think that's the difference between the two, is the email. But I think the difference is that the military is not trying to go to the students without involving the parents. That's what I see. And the universities, so do the parents all know all the communication that the universities are having about all their free money and how they can go to college for free, and, you know, how easy it is, and, you know, go talk to your counselor, if that's all bypassing the parents because it's going to the student HAVASU online account. I don't know. So I'm wondering what that process is, because I know you're all parents, and some of you have kids in college.
Actually, somebody just got peppered with all of that over the past year, year and a half. I got stuff from, I had more stuff from places he contacted than places he didn't. The one place that really peppered us was the University of Arizona, and he had no contact with them. And they were on my email and on his email, and sending things to the mailbox and so on. I kind of feel that what I saw was not a big advertisement on free college or student loans. What I saw was, "You're going to really enjoy it here", and it was more of an experience recruiting that they were doing rather than, "Here's a goldmine of free money." At the end of the day, I don't like people having information to solicit people, but there's a statute and a law that says that we have to give certain things up. And so I think we only give those things up that we have to do in the minimum way. If we have to give up an electronic mail address to the Board of Regents, I like the fact that it does go through the school. And again, most of the solicitations that you're getting, they're not about free money. The free money happens after you apply, after your parents are involved, after there's, I'm going to use a term you don't like, FASPA involved.
FASPA.
FASPA. But that's where that starts to come in. And the minute that we filled out that FASPA for my son, we were inundated by all of the Sally Mae and this whole barrage of, "Oh, take out this loan against your house so that we can send your kid to school," and on and on. That does come, but that comes to my mailbox. I get to look at it, it gets very quickly shredded.
That's fine. Is that your experience too?
Same experience. I did not get the Sally Mae stuff, so they're with us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a shredder tomorrow.
Our daughter received more mail on a daily basis than mom and dad did at home. As soon as that May 1st, it's kind of the national assignment, if you will, or post-olds want you to declare to their school for a public school year, that mail has come to an abrupt halt. And she's only receiving mailings from the school that she is enrolled in at this point. The HAVASU online account also, once a student graduates, and I do not know the date off the top of my head, but we do shut that off for that student. So it is no longer their account once they're no longer our student and graduated from us as well. And with the FASPA, and I know that's just like yours as well, to echo John, but you are getting nowhere without your parents sitting down and going through that with you. You're not going to be able to submit it. It's just not something you can do.
Oh, I know. I had to fill them out for our kids year after year, and it was a nightmare.
My mom reminded me, my dad pulled out one for me too, back in the days.
So I would like to point out that we don't even keep a student, we don't even maintain a student's phone number in our system. We don't have any of that on file, nor do we have any of their personal email addresses.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so we don't even collect that data.
So we can take, then can we just go through the list? So we need A, the student's name, B, the student's address, C, the student's telephone listing, we can remove that. D, the student's...
Can we back...
Oh, sorry.
I think we need to possibly reword that to the student's parents' telephone listing. If we're releasing that, I don't know if that needs to be on there, if we word it that way, or if any...
Well...
We do have the student's phone numbers in synergy that they've given to us. Some of our students don't have their parents anymore.
But that's not something we collect as a matter of record as students.
No, sure. Just in synergy.
So the question is, is the parents' information directory information?
No.
It's, I think that's not an issue. This is just about the student.
In spite of we have the numbers, but we're not releasing them, so we could remove them from the list of information that we auto, would auto-release.
However, if a student is 18 and that they are mandated, then that information is their information.
That's right.
So the challenge you have from a legal perspective is there are some situations where it would be student information versus parent information. And I know that the directory information, although we don't want to be able to do that, we need to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a situation where we are releasing information, where we're excluding it, that we're doing it inadvertently, which would be the case with some of our older students at the high school.
But those older students could come in and sign, they could sign a release to release their information, and that is the problem. That's what we're discussing, right?
The challenge you have is when we get a request for directory information, when a parent, we do have some of the exclusions where certain information ought to be. And so those parents' information, when we run a query, are removed if they said that they don't wish for certain information, their pictures and things like that. But I don't know that we'll be able to differentiate a student who's 18 years old at the high school if they're running that directory information, because you'd be pulling it from that parent, or that would be the student information, and that type would be in the parent information. I think that's an issue.
So I guess my question would be, if they're over 18, then they don't want to apply?
Well, they can direct their own information.
But how would you know?
Well...
By their date of birth.
Wouldn't we know that the student is over 18? And wouldn't we know that their parental contact number is the same as theirs?
Unless they've changed their contact number from their parents, it would be the same information.
If I remember correctly, in FERPA, there's explicit language that if you're 18 and, you know, you take ownership of all of your student information, but that doesn't just happen automatically. Like, you have to be involved as the 18-year-old.
No, when you're legally 18, it's in the FERPA, those rights transfer to you.
They just transfer.
By law, when you're 18 in Arizona, you're an adult, and those rights transfer automatically.
Wouldn't we capture that just by keeping their date of birth? I mean, our systems are pretty sophisticated now, aren't they?
I don't know that the date of birth is there, but I don't know when you're looking at that field where they're entering the information. When a student, I consider are those situations where students are 18 and they come in and they can say, "I don't want my parent," and they're removing their parents, and the student becomes, quote-unquote, the parent.
That was the part I was talking about. The student actually has to come in and remove, don't they, the parent? Even though the rights transfer, the parent can still call on the student unless the student explicitly makes the request to have, they don't want their parent knowing anything. So there has to be some interaction between the student at that point when they turn 18, if they want to strip their parents from having access to their student records. Even though the rights transfer, they have to make that, you know, action.
They still nail out report cards and all of that, or nailed out to the address that their parents had, all of that same stuff.
I don't know. If we're not giving out student phone numbers at this point for anything under directory information, I don't see how it would nega... I think we would have heard if it negatively impacted us, either by, you know, Board of Regents or the military.
I'm ready to move on to...
We're only on...
E?
C.
We're still on C. Oh, I passed C out.
So did I, but...
Are you ready for D? D?
On D, we would not give out the place of...
So we could remove place of birth?
And then E?
Can we reword that to say the student's district provided electronic email address?
Here you go, Karen. And then F?
Yes, we'll keep that, right?
G?
Yes.
H?
No. Can we strike that? Does a high school student even have a major field study?
Perhaps, if he is in CTE, one of the CTE classes, you might say that, but I don't know.
But we don't collect that, do you think it's...
That would be selfish.
I would say if that one was added on there whenever, two years ago that I referenced, when we have the top 20 dinner where the majority of those seniors have decided what their major field study is, and there's a pamphlet made for that top 20 dinner, that has changed now where they fill up that information on their own now. So it's not something that we do release.
Aye.
Cross that one out. Cross that one out.
What did you say?
No one requests that combination.
K?
Keep it. L, I understand, is Houston sports, so keep it.
Specifically wrestling.
M? M? I would say keep it. That's in the newspaper all the time. And N, I think we should strike because it's, I don't think that's.
It's redundant. They're requesting the information regardless. They know what the last name is.
Okay, anything else?
So then, as I'm having, it looks as though we're keeping A, B. We're modifying D to just say date of birth. E, we're modifying district provided email. We're keeping F and G. We're keeping K, L, and M. So this would be brought back with just that list of mine. Is that what I'm saying?
Brought back at the next court meeting. Anything else from this item?
We're done on a closed discussion.
All right, Karen. So we don't need to vote on this tonight, because it's coming back to us next month.
And we'll bring it back as a revised version to the CD, because it's a regulation, everyone has to comply with time, nothing's revised.
Okay. Item.
I'll make it a second, please.
Second. Okay, then, so we're done. Closing discussion? Yes. Do we need a vote to close discussion? We took a vote to open it.
So we would need a vote.
Okay, so go ahead, Karen.
Patricia Hallidore?
Yes.
Nicole Crowell?
Yes.
John Toscana?
Yes.
Yes. Item 6.10, Mrs. Asayor.
Thank you. This item is being brought back. It was requested to discuss the use of student cellphone video, particularly how it could possibly be used as a recall in hearings or in disciplinary action. And so the only place that we really have anything listed on student cellphone video is in this particular policy JK-R, which is a regulation. And on the top of the second page, the second bullet, talks about the use of electronic devices and that students need that permission to use, to video things at school. This is really for formalized settings as opposed to the day-to-day stuff that happens. You know, students are allowed to do head phones up at lunch and so forth. But we did get a opinion from our attorney in regard to the use of student video, that if students actually make the video that there could be FERPA concern because there would be more than one minor student that would be portrayed in the educational record. And so I believe I sent back out the second part of that in terms of the FERPA definition. And they talk specifically about when the photo is directly related to a student and it's maintained by an educational agency by, or by a party acting for the agency. And so those are an "and" situation. So if the student video is used to, as evidence for discipline or for a hearing, now it becomes a record that we have to maintain because it was used as evidence. So FERPA does apply in that particular situation.
Do we have any motion? I'm, we approve 6.10. As presented.
We want to open discussion?
No. We discuss it in the motion. I mean.
Then there will be no vote.
I'm sorry?
We don't need a vote then, if we're just.
If we're not making changes, we can actually.
It's on the here, just don't bother.
We don't, we don't need a motion if we're.
Oh, gosh, this was me asking to bring this back to the board. Sorry, 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 sorry. I just have questions, so I guess a motion to open this discussion, sorry.
Second.
Have questions. Okay, go ahead.
Go to the second one.
Yeah, we said, John's. Yes, yes, yes? Okay.
No, we're just opening.
Okay. So I read this from Tosca, and so here's my question. And she uses the example, a fight breaks out between two students in the cafeteria, right? So what happens when a fight breaks out in the cafeteria? It happens to be caught on tape from a distance, and it proves that one person was defending themselves. But we have the zero tolerance policy, right? Not on the books anymore, but if you get into a fight, you're going to get in trouble.
Unless it's self-defense.
That's not true.
If there is a defined, a definition for self-defense, in terms of.
I haven't seen that definition of self-defense.
Do you remember that? Joe sent it to me.
I won't be able to quote it.
Okay.
It is when you are in a situation where there is no means of escape. So if I were to back you into a corner and coming at you, if we picked this corner of the room here, and that cabinet was not there, and you had no reasonable means of escape, or in a bathroom stall where somebody is coming at you, then it is deemed self-defense if you have no means of escape.
But if it's more than one person attacking one person, and that one person doesn't run and engages, they're going to be in trouble too. This is so fundamentally wrong that we put our kids through this, I just have to say. Because, you know, we have this bullying problem, and the reason we have the bullying problem is because the bullies aren't getting their let's be. I mean, really, that's what it boils down to. And I know that seems like I'm advocating for violence, but I did watch a video that was on Facebook of a young man who was being attacked in this school. And it was so wrong that that couldn't be used, you know, that video. It didn't provide the context. Or, I don't remember what the whole backstory was. But the idea that his only option was not to stand his ground and defend himself, was to run because there was, he could run in 47 directions, now we're going to punish him, seems wrong. Doesn't it? Is it just me? Well, I, I think that these things end up getting handled almost on a case-by-case basis. Often, there is some background or some backstory, something in the attacker's history, his discipline record, or hers, and then the other students, and they've been advanced. I mean, they can, they can handle.
We still, I mean, we contextualize it to a degree, but we still, anytime you have two young men that get into a fistfight, and there are violent confrontations, I don't condone fist fighting. But when you get two young men getting in a fistfight, and it happens, it just does, we tend to want to, at some level, consequence both of them, whether it's an equal consequence or not. I think we've moved a step away from it. We haven't moved completely away from it, we've moved a step away. I can tell you that, that it has been my experience that generally in a fistfight, the district, when they come to discipline hearings, has historically, maybe not as of late, but has historically asked for an equal measure for both parties. We don't contextualize. When you get into a discipline hearing, there's not, well, yeah, but this happened that precipitated. You're not allowed to talk about the other party. You are allowed to talk about your actions as a student, but not what happened to you, not what precipitated it. We get our fans taught left, right, and center by FERPA, and a lot of this in our calculations of it. And we don't get the chance to actually say, "This is what started the fight, here are the parties involved." And so how do you then contextualize this at all if our discipline process does not, by federal law, allow for contextualization? It just, how do you, how do you sit there and even start to look at it when you can't use the videos? You can't mention other parties? We used to have a, have a very simple setup in this, in this country. Everybody sat down in the principal's office after a fight. You figured out who was right and who was wrong, what was up, what was down, and meted out the problem, and you both found out working with the custodian. Or you're in more fear because you went home with your dad. You know, "I'm afraid of my dad more than I am if it happens to me at school." Nowadays, that doesn't work that way. And we wind up in discipline hearings, long-term suspensions, removing kids from the education garden. And I would, I would venture to guess that, well, there's no saint to fight between two young men. There's a reason why it happened, and we should be understanding that. And I think, once you understand why the fight happened, you can then go back and say, "Probably should have done this better because of that, let me go out and do that." We don't get to do that.
I think that as we're talking about videos, one of the things.
Remind her.
One of the things is whether the video is shown in whole or in part, it could be taken out of context. The other thing, as most of you will know nowadays, they're photo, seriously photoshopping photos and videos to do anything. So how do we know if it's a fake video? So I, I think videos have to be treated very, very disally.
So I'm trying to, I was trying to go back and remember why I wanted this brought back up in the first place, because I think I went down a road that wasn't pertinent to why we, I originally wanted to see it. And that was because we were discussing that students weren't allowed to use their video function on their cellphones at camp, on campus. Is that, was that the context?
That is what it says here in this. But I thought that when you asked to bring it back, it was because we weren't able to use the video like when we were seeing the kids over the fight in our situation at FERPA campus, if something had videoed in.
And I think it was because we were installing the surveillance. And my concern is that, as adults, we're surveilling the kids, but the kids aren't allowed to use their own videos to. So when we're talking about, and I appreciate what you're saying about the doctored videos, because, boy, they're doctoring videos now, AI videos. From one single Facebook profile picture, they can turn into a video, making you do something that you never did. I just got to see that article, I think I might have ordered it, but anyway. My concern is that we're sending a mixed message about the videos. And if the student has a video of a fight that occurred in that day, in that period, I have no concern it's been doctored. There is no time to doctored a cellphone video that just occurred, that just happened. Of course, I wouldn't want something that, you know, was emailed from home a week later, "Oh, look at the fight we captured," that's different. But my concern was that we weren't using it because everybody's got their cellphones. And I just feel like that we punish, especially boys, for what I think has been normal behavior in a lot of ways. That's sometimes the only way to resolve your issues from the beginning of time, you know? That's how men have resolved their issues. And I know there's a big controversy about that. But when we're putting kids out of school, we're certainly not helping that aggressive behavior. And if there's kids that are being bullied and fights that are occurring, and students are being told that they can't use that video or capture it on video to prove that somebody was defending themselves, I don't know why we would allow them to bring their own devices anyways. I mean, when you think about being that one student who could be exonerated by somebody's cellphone video, which everybody has, and your life gets altered a little bit because you get walked out of high school in handcuffs for a fight, that, that can be life-altering. And I think it deserved, I know, the attention to discuss it, for sure. And I've sat through a few discipline hearings where I completely disagreed with the administration's recommendation to expel based on fights. And I know that you guys' stance are tied because you're following policy, I get that. And I guess that's what I'm questioning, is, you know, all the kind of mixed messages that we're sending. We want all these kids to just sit and study and take these tests and, you know, play nice together, but not too nice together, and not fight, not be normal. And if you step out of line, you know, we're going to involve the police. And oh, by the way, did we just change statute? Are we mandated now? Like, I know we were policy-wise involving the police, but didn't somebody just ask on this legislative session? Did not like fire them?
Other than that, I think it was in there that they have to be required.
And so anyways.
So if I may.
Please.
I really wasn't expecting necessarily this conversation out of you this today, but I do want to share this because I think it's important to know. They start, students are aggressive, they're, they start as children, as younger children. And at the elementary schools, they handle those in-house. They're not, they're taking into context. They're using this opportunity to teach kids how to handle conflict. We don't even bring students forward for extended suspension for fighting until they get to high school. So they have all these opportunities to learn, to have opportunities to intervene, with possible exceptions where somebody's seriously injured at the middle school if it was that serious. But by the time they are freshmen in high school, they should have learned how to resolve conflicts because as adults, we don't get into fistfights to resolve conflicts. The opportunities for students to become seriously injured, even if they were defending themselves, those risks increase as they get older. And then the opportunities for other students to become engaged and cause greater harm as students get older, that occurs more frequently at the high school level. So it's not like they've been allowed to do this, and all of a sudden we're saying, "You can't fight anymore." They really have had opportunities to learn how to resolve conflicts throughout. I would also say that our administration has been much better about looking at, much better about, I mean, I think they've always looked at the context of the situation, look at the context of the student. But this past school year, we only had seven fights at the high school that came forward for hearing. And out of those seven, I believe, five of the students went back after the hearing.
Well, I can't even remember the last expulsion hearing we had.
Yeah, so.
I can't even remember, what is it, last year, I don't think.
We really have been doing a lot to help resolve some of that conflict. And so it, at least from my viewpoint and from personal experiences of my own, the consequences of fighting as they get larger and older are much greater than, than just a possibility of a suspension hearing. And we do need to help our students understand how to function as adults in society because that is not okay. They will get arrested and taken to jail as soon as they turn 18 and get into a fight. So at some point, we have to accelerate their learning of the consequences. That's my personal bias on it, but I've observed over many years in education.
I agree with everything that you just said. I also think that there's some things that that's the only way to get the message across. And I think with, when I talk about bullying, I'm not even talking about the physical in-kind bullying anymore. That's not even what I mean. I guess I should state that when I'm talking about it, but that's not what I'm talking about because I don't see aggressive little kids, or not little kids, but high schoolers, I should refer to them that way. But, you know, young adults, I don't see them like that, but they are online. And so when I say bullying, I'm referring to sometimes that's the only way to resolve that kind of, is a personal interaction because everybody's hiding behind those computers, and it is vicious. It is the most disturbing, I've read the most disturbing things. Go ahead.
To help you understand also, a lot of times, it is, most of it is social media bullying. And when that's brought to our attention, we do bring in all the parties. We do try to do conflict resolution with the kids, have them get together. We talk, we do do that. I know that several of the situations that came to the board hearing this year, it wasn't just a one-day fight. It was a situation, you know, several that had happened. We'd had discussions with them, said, you know, "If this happens again, we're going to," you know? So we do try, I mean, I'm a mom of a boy, and I completely understand boys being boys too. But I do know that of the fights we've had this year, four of them that I dealt with had serious medical issues. And then we bring in Officer Eric Martin for that. But we, we really are that cruel. We do try to meet with the kids, talk with the kids, do conflict resolution, some of that restorative justice with them. Most of the bullying is done on social media, and we do get a lot of that. And we do, we do take it serious. do take it serious.
Can I ask a question? I'm sure probably, but when, does, does the police officer look at video that's supplied to them?
So if a fight happened on campus, obviously the two that are fighting aren't videoing it. It's, it's everybody, and that's a quick indicator to us, also on a campus of 1,700-plus, that something's going on right over there that should not be, because there were phones in the air. We do have good kids in our school that do not want these things happening in their school. Within moments, they're down in the office saying, "Mr. Becker, Mr. Greer, Ms. Williams, here's a video." And the only time, the only use that it really is, is to indicate who were the two people fighting, because sometimes they're in the middle, and they, they know that somebody's coming, or somebody alerts that our security guards are on the way, and then we add something happened and had no clue who it was. So it's to, to identify, and then at that point, Officer Har, Earhart is involved, and he goes through his investigation of interviewing witnesses that were around at that time that are, that are willing to fill out a witness statement, and obviously doing checks that I don't just select Ms. Williams' friends to, to interview at that point, that there's a wide variety of students, and then we go from their witness statements and move forward at that point. We, I've never personally brought a student's recording of a fight to a hearing, because there is that piece of, "When did you start recording this? Did I smack Ms. Williams first, and then my buddy started recording, and this is what's being shared with us, so it looks like she attacked me?" So that, we do kind of utilize those videos in that sense. It's strictly identification at that point.
So, as I recall, the motion is just to discuss this item. Now, are you ready to vote on this item, or?
Yes, sorry, can I ask one more question? This policy describes the not being able to use their electronic instruments during the school day, but I understand that, that students aren't allowed to have their phones out at lunchtime, and are they also during passing period?
Correct.
And so does this need to be updated just from that standpoint, that it no longer reflects our practice?
So going back to my statement as well, if a kid brings down a video of a fight so that we can identify, we're not going to persecute a kid that just helps us out to keep our city, our campus safe. So that, I mean, we do not act in that manner by any means. And, and those individuals that do share those things with us, we do not share with anybody who are, are reporting, people are, or we're not going to get any reports in the future. Our students are our biggest help when it comes to bullying and with fights on campus, because there are more of them, they know what's going on. Just like Ms. Williams said, when, and I agree 100%, if we could get rid of social media, I don't know that we'd have bullying at all. I mean, there'd be...
Very rare.
Very rare. And when that takes place, and we see the loop things that are said, and we pull all those parties together, we obviously do our end of things, and then if we see fit, we also bring Officer Earhart in to counsel them on, you know, more contact with each other. If this continues, your response is, "Please do not contact me anymore." And then if that happens, and there's continued contact, he explains the harassment statute to them as well, and goes through that. So it's a pretty thorough process, and then that's documented, so that if they go down to the skate park at that time, it's not a police record, it's an info report, that if they go down to the police, or the skate park or the movie theater, and then they get in a fight, and the officer does his job down there, he can say, "At 12:20, you were in Mr. Becker's office with Officer Earhart," and there is context for those individuals to be able to see that there, this isn't just something that just happened as well.
Well, that just opened up a whole other can of worms.
I was just breaking that.
Just back to the statement for a moment, it does actually say that they can't use it unless it's been authorized by the school administrator, so since the administrator allows them to have it out at lunchtime, then that's considered authorized by the school administrator, so.
So we're fine with the way that it's...
Yeah, I think we're fine with the way it's presented.
So did you want to say anything else on that can of worms?
No, not that can of worms, but...
We can open it another time, it's open at another time.
I have to understand what I just heard better, so.
There is a police report, and it's, it's a record, and it really has nothing to do with the school again at that point, but that's now, now it's together.
I couldn't hear a lot of words, so...
Well, I don't want to look at the statute, I want to look at what just passed legislatively too, because I remember something about it being mandated.
Well, now, did you want to go ahead and vote on?
I, I would move to be closed discussion.
Okay. And then would it be brought up at the next board meeting?
Yeah, I'll make their changes.
So we're not, so we're fine with no changes? Okay then, all right.
I say, please.
And so we don't need to vote, right?
No, we do.
All right. That's my fault. I'm going to add. Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Analiar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to 6.11, Mrs. Asayor.
Thank you, this was...
Policy, Mrs. Cohen requested that be brought back and for discussion, and this is the policy on open and closed campus, so.
Okay. I will entertain a motion that we discuss of this...
So...
Okay, and a second, okay, Mrs. Cohen. And Mrs. Cohen said you were the one who brought this up, would you like to?
Well, I got the numbers, yeah, well, because, I, I thought, I think that now I'm remembering, it was kind of the context of, are we treating our kids like adults, or are we treating them like kids? I think that was part of it. But anyways, the open-closed campus, and I know that horrified everybody, I think I got numbers on that, and it looks like a majority of our seniors already have four-period days anyway, so I think this is really a non-issue. But that was my curiosity, because, you know, the schools, of course, things change, I realize things change, but it's such a lockdown now, everything's just so locked down. I had open campus, we walked on and off campus, you know, you don't go to school, you, you don't graduate. That was kind of the thing, but, so anyways. But a majority of our seniors are already off campus by noon every day, so it really doesn't mean anything beyond that. That's good. Well, they're so smart, they can have a four-period day, and we still get paid for a full-time student, right?
Yep.
So, wait.
Move to closed discussion.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Fleming?
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archie Analiar?
Yes.
Yes. That was that first non-item, and that was good, do it again. 6.12, Mrs. Walter.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended the governing board approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding for WakeHawk Head Start preschool classroom facilities used to acknowledge elementary for a granding and have a superhigh elementary school. The district has identified the need and value of providing quality preschool systems for at-risk children, particularly those from low-income families within our community. This agreement is being revised at this time to include the relocation of one of the current two-head start classrooms from Nonos Elementary School to Have a Superhigh Elementary School. This would increase access for eligible low-income families to quality preschool intervention at Nonos Elementary School, Have a Superhigh Elementary School, and Warfond Elementary School, in addition to the Pima Head Start site. Approval of the renewal of the memorandum of understanding will serve for a period of five years, with option of termination within three months for the notification. A copy of the agreement has been reviewed by legal and is attached to this item for board's review.
Do I have a motion to?
I move to approve 6.12 as presented.
Second? Mrs. Asayor, did you want to say?
I think I heard you were saying, oh, I say.
Oh, she said, okay. So is it a discussion?
Just to get the board a little bit of understanding, the enrollment at Nonos is growing, and we have the two classrooms, and because of the increased student enrollment, we're moving one, and the reality is we may be transitioning both classrooms to Have a Superhigh based on enrollment, but they have more capacity.
So, top of the question, Mrs. Fleming?
Archie Analiar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Maston?
Yes.
John, Kathy Cox?
Yes. All right. Item 6.13, Mrs. Asayor.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the board approve the first presentation of the revised policies listed below. These policies are brought forward as a bundle because they have technical changes as a result of changes in the law, and of course, the board always has opportunities to revise this. So the policies are as follows. First policy is DIE, audits and financial monitoring. The law had required us to change auditors every three years, and then legislation discovered that there weren't of that auditors for school districts to do so, and so they have taken that out of the policy. So this is one that we revised last year, and we're revising again this year to remove that language. The second policy is family life education. I did spend some time going through the statute to make sure that the language of our policy is aligned. There is, there was a question that came up from a board member on page two of three under the content, and the, the word in the first paragraph under content of instruction K-12A says "dead," and that is the correct word for that. The language that has been removed are, is on page five of that policy, under number five, promote and honor, promote, honor and respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage has been removed, and then under the HIV education, the language that shall be included that promotes homosexual lifestyle, portrays homosexuality as positive alternative lifestyle, or suggests that some methods are safe methods of homosexual sex, those lines have been redacted as a well for the policy. And that are, that is the only change to these, to that particular policy. The next one is the admission of resident students, and this is, again, we are required to show student residency annually, as well as anytime a student moves. And so the language which is an update and has been revised for homeless preferable law is that proof of residency is not required for homeless students, and that has been added on page seven. And then on the residency verification, the United States passport has been deleted, and a valid Arizona address confidentiality program authorization card has replaced the passport there. There's also new language that the public school shall accept the substitute address as the address of record, and shall verify student enrollment eligibility through the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State shall facilitate this transfer of student records from one school to another. And then finally, off-base military housing rental agreements can also be used for residents.
So, what are the major changes per statute? Okay. Is there anything else that you want to add?
No, the forms are revised, and as we go on, the next policy is on page 12. This is the tuition or admission for non-resident students, and again, this is the same information that was on that policy, was about homeless students, and then again, the, the using the passport and the military housing. On this particular one, the entire forms have changed, so you'll notice in the divots, one of them is completely crossed out and then re-formatted. And then on page 20, is the public's right to know freedom of information, and this is adding language for public record, defining what a public record is, and then identifies that the superintendent receives those for press for public records. And then finally, it strengthens the language that we shall provide access to public records, but we can charge for those copies, and there's some additional information that has been added regarding commercial purposes. So this is again, all has relation to statute changes.
So, we have five different, I would say advisories that we're taking a look at. Any suggestion, or we go about discussing each one?
Well, I make a motion that we approve 6.13 as presented, but that we break them up for the second reading.
For the second reading, okay. So how, how do you, how would you like those broken up for the second reading then?
Individually each? And are there any, did you want to have any discussion about possible changes of these ones?
I made the motion.
Yeah. Can we break them up into two, five separate items, the agenda for this?
For me, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion about that? All right, I think that'll, that'll work.
Yes. So the first thing that I want to mention is the last policy, the Public Right to Know Freedom of Information Act. There's no statute cited.
Totally.
So it's one thing for the legislature to go and constantly change the rules, but now we've got to worry about ASBA coming in and changing the rules? For what purpose? There was no legislative change, so that's concerning for me. I don't know why they sent this out.
You know, I don't have that advisory in front of me, I advise for that.
It could be, this is a regulation, it could be on the actual policy.
That the policy is cited, that, that, that the legislation is cited. So we don't have citations on regulations.
But there was no legislative action taken on public record requests, other than medical records, and I read through all that, and it didn't pertain to even a school setting, so I don't know what this is about. But I would be interested if there's any information on why they're pushing that out.
Okay. So I need to go back and read that advisory, my apologies. All right, then, Mrs. Fleming? Oh, something else, Mr. Maston?
Are we still having the State Board of Education discussing the regulation on family life education?
So I actually went to that website and downloaded it, they actually adopted the regulation, and it was approved on May 20 of 2019, so whether it will reappear on an agenda, I don't know, but at this point in time, the board did in fact adopt the regulation.
It's been reopened.
It's, it's going to be reopened.
It's been reopened.
It's still adopted until they redo, re-adopt it.
So, it's on the agenda for the 24th to have that discussed. You know, I just want to say, I won't belabor this, because it's the first reading, but the idea that removing this from statute, you know, I heard our superintendent speaking about this, and then I also heard Kathy Harrod from the Center for Arizona Policy, which is a very socially conservative group, basically agreeing that this language that was removed, about promoting, honoring, and respecting, respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage is an antiquated old idea that needed to be kicked to the dustbin, and I thought to myself, here we are in all this diversity, inclusion, and we're singling out heterosexual monogamous relationships that somehow bad, that we need to strike that? It kind of feels like our world has kind of turned upside down a little bit. So, I'll be at the State Board about on the 24th Friday now for that.
And this is actually the, that particular language is under 15-716 of Arizona statute, and I actually pulled this up on the 12th, and it had not been removed from the statute at that point.
I just looked at it, and it was still there, right? So, and, and that's the other thing, you know, this all went down before they started the budget talks, this was all part of a backroom deal, and the governor signed it, you know, within hours of the legislature pushing it through, and we just need to be really careful about what we're, what we're saying here. You know, we're going to say that everything else is normal except for a monogamous heterosexual marriage. I mean, that's where we're headed, that's what the push is, and it's just really wrong to send that message out to our kids. Our kids struggle as it is with everything that's being foisted on them, and then to make this the, the most pressing issue of the legislature and the ADE kind of setting. And just in case anybody wants... And just in case anybody wants to do additional reading before the second read, all of our sex ed, and I'm so thrilled our district does not have an actual sex ed policy, because we shouldn't. That is totally for the family, in my opinion, to discuss. But a lot of districts in Arizona have an actual policy. We don't. Am I correct?
Well, we have a policy for family life education.
Well, we don't have a policy. We have the generic Arizona School Board Association policy.
Yes.
But that's not a sex ed policy, and there's a difference. Am I correct? A sex ed policy requires us to have a committee, requires us to go through curriculum, adopt curricul-- we don't have that.
Yeah, our policy is that language. And so, if we decide to offer it, we would have to do all of those things.
That's what I mean by we don't have one, because we haven't had to go through all that yet. And I think that's a great thing. I mean, that's fantastic, because there's some school districts that are now going to go through just unbelievable pain over this subject. But I will tell you, and Marsha Cox and I have both been doing a lot of research, and she ordered this book, and I'm ordering it too. Our whole sex ed in this country from the early '70s on has been predicated and built on Alfred Kinsey's research, his science. And Planned Parenthood, same thing. I mean, they all followed this science, and it's the sexual behavior in the human male. I think it was published in forty-eight. And that's what all sex ed was built on, is this research. And what's so disturbing, and what we're going to go talk to the State Board about on Monday, is that chapter five was completely glossed over in this book, and it's all about, in the chapter five, table thirty-four, is all about all the minors, five months to ten years old, timed in a 24-hour period about how many orgasms these five-month-old, eleven-month-old, two-year-old, four-year-old, nine-year-old, ten-year-old could achieve in a 24-hour period with a pedophile, in my opinion, molesting them. And this is what our sex ed was built on, just so everybody's real clear about what we're about to discuss in this state. So, it's very disturbing research to do, and I like to research, but not this stuff. But anyways, so I'd just be happy to share any research that I have with anybody interested in that deep, dark dive, because that's what it is. It's a deep, dark dive. And it's about to be foisted on our entire state with the removal of that, promote, honor, and respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage.
Well, let me just give you a little food for thought. I don't want to discuss, continue, I just want to give you a little food for thought. If a teacher teaches this material, we're to check the district policy, that would be really a good thing, and I hope all of them do, because it is, you know, it's touchy, it's political, I mean, they need to really know where our policy is. And when they come to that statement, promote, honor, and respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage, then what you have is, from the teacher's viewpoint, the teacher needs for every student in that class to feel accepted and liked, whether the teacher agrees with things going on, it doesn't matter. So, and because things have changed so much in the last few years, for the teacher to stand up and say, this is, you know, I'm promoting this, it's what we need to do, and to have students there think, oh, my gosh, if my teacher only knew, you know, he wouldn't like me, she wouldn't like me, and, you know, that's, I think that's probably why this statement has been deleted, that the teacher would now be expected, with the statement included, to promote, to promote this in the classroom. And I think teachers would be very uncomfortable knowing that they now have got gay students in the classroom, and that they don't want to alienate those kids anymore.
Did you feel uncomfortable in the classroom?
Did you feel pressured to promote, respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage?
No, because that was never an issue that I even was.
But that's my point. It's not an issue.
Well, it is if, you know, you have gay students in your class.
Why? Does that language make you disrespect gay students?
No, it doesn't make me disrespect.
Or any teacher.
It makes the students who are gay uncomfortable.
Only because adults are telling them to be uncomfortable about it. See, if we're treating everybody with respect regardless of their skin color, or their gender, or their sexual preference, or any of the other identity politic categories that we can come up with, then we don't have all these issues. But the amount of money and time that we're spending on these very personal issues in a school setting, when we have, you know, we need to be worried about reading and writing and getting along with each other, it's obscene and absurd. And nobody's advocating for treating, not from my perspective, and that hasn't been my experience. You know, I know I'm not that old, but from a very young age, I've been surrounded by people that had different sexual preferences. They were people to be admired in that, you know, they were higher up the corporate ladder than I was, they were very respected people. You know, there was never this issue about we need to create special education so we can train people, and how to be respectful.
Well, the word promote is pretty strong.
Well, that's how you continue a culture. You know, you can only continue a culture when you have people procreating. And there's all this talk about everything that has, that doesn't support procreating. So, yes, we talk about diversity, but we seem to be cutting out that population of people that are, that believe in the Bible, that are Christians, that want to procreate, that don't want to see abortion, they would rather see adoption or whatever. We're carving that section and deeming that, that, in our culture, in our society.
Well, I know in our school district, I checked with Mrs. Mayor to see what happens, because this is where this is taught, it's in the E department, still in the second room, is, and she said, we just, abstinence, 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 that's what we promote, and she said.
Let me tell you what concerns me. I don't like tinkering with this. I think the legislature overstepped. I think they're overstepping again. We're promoting, one way or another, and what we should be teaching is we should be teaching reproductive health. That's really what sex education should be, is this is how it happens, this is the reproductive health part of it, and we should be done with it, and we shouldn't have a lifestyle in any of this. What goes on between consenting adults in bedrooms at the conservative at the table is nobody's business.
So, then?
I think that we could completely rewrite this and say, you know what? This is what we actually do in our case. I respect the fact that we've had a statute, and up the flagpole, and down the flagpole, and left sideways, and all over, out of screen, and everything. But regardless of your sexual orientation, it should be appropriate to the grade level, it should be medically accurate, it should promote abstinence, it should discourage drug use, and we should dispel the myths regarding the transmission of HIV. I mean, I think we can all agree on that, and that's where we should come together.
We can all agree on that.
Okay, what can we agree on?
First of all, be medically accurate. The medical accuracy is based on this stuff. That's what it's based on. So, no, it's not, this is not, none of this is okay.
But are we teaching human sexuality, or are we teaching reproductive health?
Well, we're teaching sexuality. First of all, the new standards are now called, they're not called sex ed standards, they're called sexuality standards. That's different. And so, I think that it's good that we didn't have a policy here. My fight isn't with anybody in the district, it's what we're about to do in our state. And this has been promoted since the early '70s. We've all gone through it. The idea that our kids aren't going to know about HIV/AIDS or the plethora of STDs that they can catch by having sex is ridiculous. Have you seen what these kids watch on TV? Like, they know how it happens now. It's not like it was when we were in school. You know what I mean? Where you're, that's the only way you're going to get the education is if your teacher tells you. They have it all right here. I mean, we can send them to CDC as part of our health class, they can look up all the information that they want, but this is wrong, and I'm glad we don't have a policy, and I hope we keep it that way in this district.
So, let's go ahead and call for the vote, and then all of these items will.
Are there any other questions on any of the other policies?
No, the last one and this one, I think.
And they will need to come up again.
Next one?
Second reading.
Separate agenda items. Go ahead.
Archana Alliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Mr. Murray, six point fourteen.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve and sign a borrowing request to the board to the Mojave County Treasurer, along with the resolution authorizing the request. The Mojave County Treasurer has requested the governing board approve and sign a borrowing request to Wells Fargo Bank for a credit line in the amount of $1 million. This request replaces the letter of declaration approved by the governing board in past years. It is not anticipated the district will be required to borrow funds from Wells Fargo, however this paperwork must be in place, should that become a necessity. Also attached is a resolution and the board authorizing the borrowing request, and both documents have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel.
I approve six point one four as presented.
Second.
And this is, just for, this is Alliar's understanding, this is basically housekeeping. If the county wasn't able to pay us for a period of time, we would have money then to borrow.
Correct. This would allow us to continue to pay, use vouchers to continue to pay our expenses and obligations.
And have we ever used the line of credit?
Not to my knowledge.
Not every school district in Mojave County can say that.
Mrs. Fleming?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Alliar?
Yes.
Paul Cohen?
Yes.
And Kathy Cox?
Yes. Mr. Murray, item six point fifteen.
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve the vouchers for April and May of 2019, as well as student activity funds, grades K through 12 for the month of April, and the auxiliary funds for each of the school sites and district offices.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Fleming?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Paul Cohen?
Yes.
Archana Alliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Now, we don't have any informational reports in our agenda, our board packed it, but do you have anything you want to add?
Of course. I know. Thank you. I actually did want to, again, highlight our gifts to our schools, and this is still not the complete list for eighteen nineteen, because we did receive something from Rotary, but for this school year, we've already had over $230,000 worth of donations to our district. And I think it's important to understand this, these are in addition to tax credit donations, and in addition to student fundraising and all of that, these are other gifts and donations, which is amazing how giving our community is. So, I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to share, I know I sent out an email, but I would like to, again, say it publicly, that our bond rating was reevaluated, and Moody's put out a press release yesterday. We were upgraded from a AA3 to a AA2 bond rating, which is an amazing feat, because they don't often upgrade a bond rating like that. It's significant to have that happen, and part of that is for the health of the community, but a major part of that is because of the fiscal health of the district. And so, I would like to compliment Mr. Murray and his team for ensuring our fiscal health and helping us to achieve that amazing bond rating. And then, I also would like to thank all of the people who participated over the last several weeks in training. We did our English Language Arts Essential Stand, which worked, we worked on the last week of May. We had, I think it was about fifty-five people who were working on those standards. We identified essential standards for our parents, for each of our grade levels, and are working on some additional things that we bring to the board for purchases. And then, not being presumptuous, we are going to be bringing forward Singapore Math to the board as a recommendation for adoption at the July eighth meeting. We did go ahead and do the Singapore Math training, and that was not to presume board approval, but because we felt that for our staff, it was critically important for them to have time over the summer to reflect and to plan. But it was amazing mathematics content training. And so, regardless of the curriculum, I believe personally, and for those who attended that, it was very valuable what they learned about mathematics. And so, all but twenty-five of our elementary teachers were trained, and we'll have a second training, actually, it's a fourth training, toward the end of July, or towards the middle of July, to pick up those teachers who were unable to be present for the trainings. So, there's been a lot of work done by Mr. Gardner's team, particularly on facilitating and coordinating all of this work in the area curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Congratulations to you and the district for accomplishing. I wanted to ask, Ms. Triasi, do you want to give us a report on your future problem solving students, just in case?
Yes, our students competed in Arizona, and they won the Arizona level, and then they went to Boston, and they are ninth in the world. So, we were very, very proud of them.
And that's the first time we've ever sent a team?
Well, the amazing part of it is this team, it was their first year competing, and the person that Mrs. Haggis was working with said, your team is outstanding, they should go to the next level. And so, they, she did take them to the next level, not anticipating they would place at all, and she said at the final awards assembly, they put the numbers up, because they were coded with a number, and she said the girls looked, and they were at the top ten, and they were pleasantly shocked that they had done so well for their very first time competing in the competition.
And these were sixth graders?
Sixth graders in the fifth, sixth gifted program.
Maybe a couple of them. I happened to watch her teach that unit for one whole day, and I think it was just grinding the things the kids were asked and required to do, and I thought, oh, my gosh, if these are kids, can they really do this? But they were taking very seriously.
Well, they got to network with children from all over the world at the competition, so it was an outstanding experience for them.
Oh, that's wonderful. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other board members? Do you have anything? Well, I guess we come to the end. There is no call for public, all right, we moved on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mrs. Fleming?
Paul Cohen?
Yes.
Archana Alliar?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.